Yeah.
Right. Well, we just. When did we say in America? United Republic Voice Change.
One nation. Into the world. We're living in a justice law.
All right. So you might as well, has everybody been through the minutes?
Yes.
Everybody good with them?
I make one little adjustment.
Yep, yep. I wasn't here, so.
Um.
Yeah.
What says Jenny Beegan?
That's at the end, where where are you looking?
Or it says, um. Yeah, I guess not under, under.
Oh, is this?
It's right before five.
Yeah, okay.
The paragraph four, five. It's. I said I was, it says I was amenable to the renewal with two small additions. No, because I said I was kind of just mentioning that the project. Um. Stipulated that veg vegetation control would be done manually. And without chemical controls, that was already.
That was already in it.
That was already.
This is not an addition, it's just a. Reiteration.
Yeah.
Okay. Too small.
Is that the only amendment?
Fine, you know what? It's right before, um. Other business. It's the paragraph above other five, number five, other business on the minutes. It's like the last.
I don't know.
This. One, one, two, three, four, page four.
Right above section five.
But I, are you looking, are you looking for the minute? Are you at September's? Yeah, I, I, the minutes that you sent over, I, I updated and.
Yeah, you can, you can have those if you, if you want.
Okay.
It's in.
Follow mine, so I have no idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's in, it's in the documents I just gave you.
Yeah.
So. Any other changes? I make a motion, we accept the minutes as amended.
I second.
Hey, all those in favor? All those opposed?
Sorry, who was, who seconded? Anne, Anne, great, thank you. And everybody approved except Jonathan, I assume.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
Yep. Good. Okay. You don't have any old business. So. Uh, the next thing on the agenda is, um.
Matt.
Kobe and Gale, and so let me just, um. Give a little bit of context for this is the finding of of facts and conclusion of law that I gave you is basically a draft. Because there's a, so there are a couple of questions that I want to. Put to the planning board to see if there's more information or if the, there's, you know, the information that we've already got is. Uh, acceptable. Um. I would note that this is not an exceptionally large project, it is, does fall into the shoreline zone. Because there's, uh, I guess wetlands back behind their site. So it's not near any of the, you know, any of the rivers, but. So it falls into that and it falls into, uh, it requires site plan review because it's commercial. So a lot of the standards when we're going through it. Are a little bit weird to apply because they seem to consider larger and. Kind of new development rather than an addition like this. So there's a, it's a little bit awkward to, when we're going through some of this to kind of. There's a lot of things that are already existing that I don't think that. The ordinance fits well with, but we, we can kind of identify those and deal with those later. Um. So, yeah, we can, we can. I don't know if, if Matt wants to go through the project, um. What will have to be done is we, because of site plan approval, we're gonna have to do public notice and have a public hearing at our next meeting.
Yeah, that's all right.
Um, but my hope is that we can kind of iron out all the details now and then. If any of the public does have comments or there are any issues, well, basically we'll get it approved at the next meeting.
I, I just have a question.
Yep.
I'm confused by this date of Monday, May first.
It was just a whole placeholder because I, I used an old.
Oh, so that's not real.
Yeah, no, anything that's that I highlighted here in, in yellow is basically. Either as close as I could guess, or it's just a placeholder and it needs to be changed, so. Um. But, yeah, I know Matt, Matt's here, if you wanna. Kind of explain the project to the board and. But, oh, yeah, we.
Yeah, right up here and take your name and all that stuff. Put you in the hot seat, Matt.
I'm ready to roll.
You're used to it.
Thank you, Matt Poole, President of Kobe and Gale. Um, what we're looking to do is, uh, relatively minor addition on the side of our office. Um. The original application has, uh. Sort of overstated the desired square footage, it was before I fully understood the setback requirements since. Um, understanding that we've had the property on our eastern more, uh, most boundary defined, uh, exactly, so we could, um. We scaled back a little bit to make sure that we fell within the setbacks and didn't exceed that. Um, you'll see that sort of in the, um, in the plans that I provided, um. For now, I think, under eight hundred square feet, it's like twenty-six by thirty, I think. Um, the building, the office that we have is. Originally was a pretty small structure, it's been added on to twice already in the last twenty years and. Just looking to add on again, so.
Cool.
It's nothing too crazy, but we do, because of the size of the property, it scales back to, uh. Some marshy swamp area in the back of our property that is considered in wetlands and that. Requires some additional things, so.
Yeah, that's, and this, I don't, doesn't look like it comes anywhere near. The wetlands, I had to kind of visit on this. Um, existing conditions plan that I. Maybe it's a black and white image, I grew out where that wetlands actually is on mine, because I wanted to see it, but.
Yeah.
It's, it's close, it's like maybe three hundred feet away, the actual. Wetlands.
Yeah.
So the proper, the parcel is in wetland, so it has to go through that review, but. It's not within like the twenty-five or seventy-five foot setback or even the two hundred and fifty feet where shoreline is even really applicable. Um. I did have one question that, uh. This, the office space, is this? This is an expansion of office space or is replacing old office space?
Yeah, it's expansion of office space.
And so is this supposed to house new employees?
No.
Okay.
No, we're crammed into every corner you could possibly imagine in the office now, so it's just sort of spread now.
Yeah, I told.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I asked because one of the things that comes up is, um. Parking requirements.
Oh, sure, yeah.
So, I mean, you've got plenty of space on here, but when we get to that, maybe. You can, we can see with the board.
Yeah.
Kind of, what they, what they're worried, what they, what questions they might have.
Sure.
Um. But I figure, uh, maybe I can just run through the, um, my review and then. As the board has questions, you feel free to ask.
Please do.
I, um. Setbacks, I, it's well out, out of the front setback, and I'm sure there were your setback as well, I will just need that information from you, but we can work. Together, last time we spoke, you wanted just a list of every, any of the outstanding.
This.
Um, issues. Um. The, to, uh, uh, I'm, yeah, so there's a front question, my frontage on. The wetlands in here and the building height. Do you know what that is now?
I don't know exactly, no, I know it's less than twenty feet.
Less than twenty, okay, yeah, so the, the, um, maximum is forty and Jenny, I know you mentioned. Um, if you weren't sure about, you thought it was thirty-five, it's thirty-five in. Two of the districts, but in this, the C two, which is in its forty feet. In the general residential in the rural, it's thirty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um. Okay, so my review looks like this is commercial in terms of the use for. For the land use, which. Um. Unless there's a. A question in there. Uh. So that is just like, I think that's gonna be like a one main point that the board's gonna wanna just confirm. Uh, it's the use of lands, buildings or structures other than a home occupation, which is defined elsewhere. The intent and results of which activity is the production of income from the buying and selling of goods and or services. Exclusive of the rental of residential buildings or dwelling units. I would say, my, I, I raise this because it's like, is this industrial or is it commercial? I, I'm gonna say it's commercial, it's not really. Manufacturing, they're not producing anything there unless I'm mistaken. Yeah. Um. I also wanted to point out under the definition of expansion in, under the land use ordinance. Um, it says that alterations of existing buildings which are required in order to meet the requirements of the ADA Act, um, or the American with Disabilities Act. Um, or state fire code are not considered to be enlargements or expansions of a structured and are not. Required to meet otherwise applicable setback requirements, provided that the alterations are minimum necessary to satisfy ADA. Um, that comes up because I know the stairs and then the ramp.
Yeah.
Are, are, um, right now are proposed to be in. They're gonna overlap into the, um, property line.
That's right.
So.
Step back.
Into the setback, yeah, that's what I mean, sorry, um, so I just wanted to point that out, my reading of, of this is that. This, the way that setback is defined is to buildings, not to, uh. Depending on, this is a conversation as having the code enforcement officer, is, um. A deck is considered to be an extension of a building, but stairs and handicap ramps are just considered to be a structure that can encroach on that. Setback.
So the building's gonna be out of the setback, but the ramp and stairs are gonna be with, within the setback requirements.
Right, right.
Which according to this does not apply to it.
By two and a half feet.
Assuming that's, that's what's proposed now and that's what my reading is, but. Obviously you will all get to make that final determination of.
Do you have existing ramp now or?
Just stairs, it's not a ramp. We have stairs on the side of our building.
But for, um. Wheelchairs, are there, are there way to get into that area of the building from existing now?
No, no, not that area, no, the front office is handicap accessible, but not the back office or anything like that.
Tie in the two together so that you will be able to get all the way out through with.
There's a section of the office you still would not be able to get to, but the, let's say eighty percent of the office.
New or old.
What's that?
New or old that you can't get to?
Old, yeah, you know, and everything new you would be able to get to, yep.
Um, all right, and so then. The. Performance standards that are in, I'm just kind of. Trying to move, like I said, it's long, this is not exactly a. Um. Huge project, but. Decent review, so the site plan review ordinance, um. Uh, that is. Gets into the performance standards, which is essentially what site plan review is, and so the first one that I noted that was any kind of issue was. F adequacy, adequacy of the public road system. Um, it sounds like this is not to accommodate new. Employees, so there really wouldn't be any new traffic generated is my, okay, so that. I, I'm, my guess is then, my, I guess my recommendation is that the public road is gonna be adequate, because there's no new traffic being generated. Um. Parking and circulation, it sounds like you, any parking, any, you're not generating any new traffic to the site anyway, so. What the board is gonna, can decide whether or not they think.
They have it on a park and, okay.
Yeah, that's.
Well, this only requires three, two and a half probably for the amount of square footage that he's asking for.
Yeah, they haven't, they have.
So it sounds like. The existing parking is gonna be able to accommodate. Especially since it's not new people anyway.
Right.
Great, um, pedestrian circulation, there are some. Um, requirements for. And this is where it gets a little bit weird, I mean, even though the last, the parking and circulation is a little bit weird because it's not a new development, so. The building that they're creating doesn't. Have any, um, pedestrian kind of infrastructure and access to it, I don't imagine there's a ton of people walking over there currently.
Biscuit road.
Right.
If you wanna live.
Right, so, um.
Forty-five, forty-five mile an hour road.
Right. So. So that's like, I think if you wanted to be. Aggressive with the, um, application, there could, the planning board could probably push for, you know, say like some kind of pedestrian. Marking to the building from the road is required. But again, I'm gonna let, leave that to, to you all after.
Also, there was never any sidewalks ever proposed, uh, that section of Biscuit Road.
Yeah, that.
Or any of Biscuit Road in particular, anyway.
That's, I did.
In the works, it's never even been talked about.
Let me see. Yeah, so I said, given the level of existing development, the location and use of the proposed buildings relative. To both on and off-site destinations, the neighborhood. Um. It. And also the fact that Biscuit Road itself is not identified as a priority for sidewalk infrastructure. Um, in any of the plans that I looked at, so.
I've seen any of them.
Um.
I do miss stuff, though.
Yeah, well, you know, it's, and some of them are old and, and so it's kind of. Um. Okay, water quality comes up in here, but it goes through, to, through shoreline, we're gonna have to go through shoreline review, um, so. Assuming it's meeting all of those standards, I, I would say it's, this will probably not. And after looking at those, probably not gonna have much of an impact on water quality.
Sure, we got the biggest filter in the world right out back there, it's a giant swamp.
Oh, right, yeah.
Best filter in the world.
That's, so, um. So I figure any issues will, will come up in shoreline zoning.
Yeah.
Um, stormwater management is the area where the footprint of the building already paved currently.
Yep.
Yeah, so it's not gonna be any new impervious surface. Um. So assuming that the standards under. The under stormwater management in the site plan review, um. If the board satisfied, I don't, I don't think that this is gonna generate any big stormwater management issues.
No.
Uh, erosion and sediment control, this is under site plan, um, I would say probably any issues are gonna come up during construction. And. That I'll kind of defer to code enforcement to make sure that there's, you know, any. That the appropriate construction procedures are followed.
Yeah.
Uh. All right, so. Natural beauty, uh. One of the standards in this is that the no unnecessary trees are being removed as part of the development, are any tree, I guess no trees should be coming down. Because there's already a parking lot there, right?
Yeah, they, um, uh, we just had the folks out, um, to everybody sort of on site to meet last week and they did wanna try to improve drainage, uh, on that side of the property, uh, but it's. I'm not sure, I mean, it's, I haven't really looked at it, it's, you know, it's kind of like an issue between Hager and us and kind of where things drain to.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, no, not currently, but the construction crew has kind of brought it up as we might wanna make sure the drainage is just. You know, like everything, just the pitch of everything here is gonna work and not cause problems.
Is adequate, all right, so. Does the board have any concerns with the natural beauty aspect of this?
No.
I said it's, the, the site's pretty well developed already, sewage disposal, are you all? You have septic there, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Not, okay, but you are on town water?
Yes, we are.
That's what I.
We have a well as well, but we don't use it currently.
What's that?
We have a well, but we're not using it currently.
Okay. Um. I'll. Kind of, I'll have. I mentioned to George, because he's the plumbing inspector, but I imagine if you're not adding new people, then any ba, there's not any bathrooms in this either, are there?
Not in the addition, no.
Yeah.
No, there are no bathrooms in the existing building.
If you're already meeting, if your septic is adequate for what you've already got, then I, I don't see that it would be an issue. Um, but again, I'll, I'll mention to George. Um, all right, so this is the, the last, wow, the last part of the site plan review is a little bit. It's interesting, um. The standard set forth under one oh two point seven V, building appearance. Apply to all buildings less than seventy-five hundred square feet. And the ordinance specifically says waivers of these requirements are not permitted. And all proposals coming before the planning board must meet these requirements to be considered for approval. So. My reading of this. And this is. Like I said, this is for stuff that is less than seventy-five hundred square feet specifically meant, like. That's how the ordinance is written. So. What I wrote here was the board's gonna need to determine if the building's architecture reflects traditional New England building forms, which include but are not limited to. Hipped and gabled roofs, dormers, windows rather than plate glass and. Clavoured shingle or brick siding.
Do, do you have a, is there a picture of it?
But we don't, um, I don't have a, a rendering of this, I imagine.
You're gonna make it matching with the rest of the building.
Yeah, will you see their impressions on the office now?
Yeah, you're not gonna make it, paint it pink and do.
No.
T one eleven on the outside.
No.
Both stay the same roof line, Matt, will you step down for the addition?
It'll be down, yeah, I think we're gonna go inside the existing.
Yep.
Gable and two feet.
Yep.
So it'll be just stepped inside.
Yep.
Yeah.
She'll find.
Okay, um. And I'm assuming you're not gonna have any reflective. Uh, or. Is it gonna be a metal building?
No.
No, okay, so it's, it's not, not. No fluorescent colors or black?
Unless, unless you make me.
No, no, I don't think anybody wants to make you, I, um. Standard corporate trademark colors are only permitted in signage, so assuming you do want any of the trademark colors, just keep it to the sign. All right, so it sounds like there's no, the board doesn't have any, any issues really here for site plan. For shoreline zoning. This is, this is where the kind of which, what use comes in, and I just wanna make sure that we're clear that this is. Um, I, I wrote that my reading of the above definition for commercial use seems to be the best fit for the primary use that occurs on the subject property. Um. The board should determine and record if they agree. If that's the primary use, and so the, the definition of commercial use for shoreline zoning, which of course is different than what's in land use or site plan. It says the use of lands, buildings or structures other than. Home occupation defined below the intent of which, I guess this is exactly the same, so it must have just been copied. Um. Hmm. There's one question about, I need to fill in. Frontage along the wetland. All right, so. Development proposed map page missing. Okay, so I said this is just gonna be office use for land use. Uh, for the land use ordinance. Um. It meets, it's gonna need to meet the conditions for uh, required for approval of a conditional use, which. I believe it does, it's gonna meet the land use ordinance, it's gonna meet the site review ordinance and the shoreline zoning ordinance. Hmm, and then just from the conversation we just had, it's good. Board seems to agree that it's gonna, it meets the building setbacks, the parking setbacks and the building height requirements.
Yeah, Mike, it in um, page eleven, under one oh five point one five B, it just talks about the thirty-five foot height requirement there.
Hey, I will check that, that looks like.
Still gonna be under it, but just an F R I, the difference between the two.
Yeah, that looks like it's, it might be in shoreline, height maximum might be thirty-five.
Yep.
So I will double check that, but either way. Assuming you're not going over thirty-five, but I'm.
No.
More than the existing.
Right. Um. So then if the board doesn't have any. Other issues.
How many people work there on that property? About.
In that office, probably close to twenty. Maybe fifteen, fifteen or twenty, yeah, I'd have to think about it and count.
I think, just was curious.
So the one thing I just wanted to mention to the board, because I found it and I thought that it was odd and. Possibly something we might want to address is that under. Land use, the schedule of land uses and what's permitted where, under the commercial services, it does say. I think it's like fuel and fuel dealers. Which is permitted here, so it's not an issue, but then the reason I bring it up is because. Oh, well, actually, it's under industrial, this is, this is for.
Light manufacturing?
No, this is under the land use ordinance, under industrial. Specifically list fuel, oil dealers and related facilities, which are permitted in C two, which is where this is. The issue that I have, and it's, this is not the only one here, is that fuel, oil dealers and related facilities just not defined anywhere. So I think we can probably pretty safely say that this would fit under that, especially when you look at all the other uses, it's just. And this is just something to consider when we're looking at ordinances as. When you have things like this that aren't defined, it makes it like.
But that's under industry. Industrial, which we're not saying that that's not what this application falls under.
Well, for land use. I think that it, and this is why it's, this is why it's weird is because if you look under commercial, they have gasoline service stations, but you're not doing gasoline, right? Is it just, uh?
He has it on that side.
gasoline on that side.
Oh, you do sell gasoline on that side, okay, so.
And propane.
And propane, right, and that's why, wh- when I'm looking at this, I'm like, I I would think fuel, oil dealers and related facilities is. Almost like, I was, I my guess is I was added in here specifically for. This use, um, to make sure that it's allowed, which makes perfect sense. The only reason I bring it up is because. And this is, it's not weird that uses under the land use ordinance, sometimes they're not gonna line up perfectly with what's under. You know, how it's defined in shoreline or how it's defined in some other ordinance, but. I just wanted to point out, there's not a definition here for fuel, oil dealers and related facilities, so it's just something that I, when we're going and. Updating ordinances, we probably wanna make sure we get definitions in for all the uses. That's all, that's, that was my only point on that, um. Does the board have any other questions?
No, everything's pretty straightforward.
So I. Because this is site plan, it it does require public notice, I mean. I don't see any reason to to try and waive that.
No, we're just holding a public hearing before the next meet.
Yeah.
Easy.
Yeah, and then we can. Get all the rest of the information in here and then approve it.
Yeah.
I guess my, my, the. My concern is, or my, my question to the, to the board is. This application seems pretty straightforward, maybe it an amendment to the land use or. Uh, site plan review ordinance is that, not that we're gonna carve out just for this. But this seems like an awful lot of review for a relatively small project.
It does.
That may or may not need, and so I I don't know, you know, if you have feelings on.
I got another technical question for you.
Yeah.
Maybe these guys can answer it too. So we've got a project, yes, the lots and shoreline zoning, but the actual scope of this project is. Out of the two hundred fifty foot setback from the wetlands. Does it still require? Shoreline zoning review?
But it's not, if you go across the road, you gotta show it a distance to that swamp across the road, then you do well behind him.
Good point, good point, yeah, okay, I forgot, let, didn't think about the swamp across the street, so yeah, there's a swamp across the street.
So it falls within it, just closer to the front and back.
I was thinking about the back and, but yeah, you're right, right across the street, it's probably a hundred fifty feet away, right?
Correct.
Cool.
And that's.
But in the future, if that a project was like this, somebody had a great big lot. One single lot, wanna do a commercial thing and it was. You know, adjacent to water on the backside, more than two hundred fifty feet away, it should require.
I wouldn't think.
Shoreland zone.
I didn't think it, yeah.
Well, so the the thing about shoreline is it's, it doesn't really say that. So in this instance, if this building was, let's say, two hundred feet away from the water. So it would fall within that two hundred fifty feet shoreline where it's applicable, but. If you look at, you go through shoreline, the shoreline zoning ordinance, um. The use that it falls under, oh, it's a commercial use, um. And it's, so it's allowed, the shoreline really, it it either. Needs more density for like the principal building, but they're not, this isn't gonna be a new principal building, so one per. I don't know.
I I think, isn't Jonathan's question? That, wh- why are we putting, why, why would we put? And a development under shoreline zoning review if. The actual project is is not within the shoreline zone at all.
Yeah, so if you look at.
My question.
Yeah, if you look at the shoreline map, it it just includes the entire parcel.
Parcel, so the map just goes parcel by parcel, it doesn't carve out like two hundred and fifty feet.
It depends on which zone, I can pull, I'll pull the map up right now.
But your point, Jonathan, we can still say if, if it wasn't for across the road, we could say this project falls outside of any two hundred and fifty circumference. From the project, which is outside of shoreline zone, therefore it doesn't apply.
Yeah.
However, we can't with this one.
Yeah.
But I hear you, uh, there's certainly you could put that in there and then it doesn't apply to those rules.
Yeah, I would think that that would be the case, but I'm not sure what he's got cooking up, but you know, he's quite thorough, so I'm interested in. Why? For my own benefit.
Yeah.
This, normally, when you, when you look at shoreline, if you like, if you're looking at residential. Stuff, most of the stuff that goes into shoreline is because it falls within seventy-five or falls within that two hundred and fifty foot buffer. This area, it's kind of weird and I.
Don't the maps show that lot as a partially in shoreline zone though? And same with L C B.
Uh, this shows the whole, and maybe I can. I'm gonna need it, let me, let me, um. Trying to think with the fastest way, I should have already been joined to this meeting, but what I, what I will show. Um, where, uh. Well, I'll just, I'll have to show the board on here. Basically, this whole area, there's just some weird irregularly shaped, um. Wetlands, so this whole area. Falls within, what I guess is within two hundred and fifty feet of wetlands.
Hmm.
This, there's a couple parcels in that area that are just all. Uh, L C B, which is what limited commercial B. So the, it it, when I look at this, it shows the whole parcel. So that's why I I go and I look, now that doesn't necessarily mean. When you go through shoreline zoning, it's gonna say, oh, well, you have to keep certain things twenty-five feet, certain things fifty feet, hundred feet. Away, but I still just go through and do the review of that ordinance, because the ordinance is technically applicable, but. Probably almost none of the standards are actually gonna apply specifically. So that's all, and so part of the reason I do that, it's the same with land use and site plan, is to say, like. The the planning board found that this is, this is not applicable, ordinance. It falls in, it fall, it requires the review of it, but the standard is not applicable, the next standard is not applicable, so that way if anybody. Well, A, the planning board can say, yes, we can approve this, and then if someone does come forward, generally, then it's also the applicant can can. Kind of rest assured that the planning board checked and it was not, we didn't miss something or.
So, so that's, that's, that's the outline, the dark outline is the parcel, right?
Um, it's, it's not, it's multiple parcels in there, actually.
Because what it's reflecting is wetlands across the street.
Yeah.
You know, not, not the wetlands in back, which kind of is, answers the question.
Yeah, it's, I mean, you can. If you had a bigger map, you'd be able to see there's, a lot of us is forested wetland, so it doesn't even seem like wetland, and then there's also the light green is like actual. Wet, wetlands, swamp, basically, um, so, yeah, but it's all.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Now, are you just doing the one floor, there's gonna be anything underneath it?
Well, the original plan was no, again, but with just the having the construction meeting the other day, this man guys are like. The way we're gonna do it, you might as well have the same daylight basement, it's it's a short daylight basement, but there's like a five foot ceiling. In that side on the existing structure that's there, and they're like, you really might as well do the same thing, we're gonna have the walls are gonna be that tall anyway. Because of the elevation on the back of the building, so we may have the same sort of, you know, crawl space slash daylight basements, like five, five and a half feet tall.
Stop.
It's the place to put file storage, essentially, yeah, not really any other purpose, so, yeah. So I think that's the current plan.
I, I have to say, our former code enforcement officer. Used to be, used to say that Stan, used to um, say that stairs and stuff. Even if they were attached to torches, still it, where they came out had to conform to the fifteen, to the setback. I'm just surprised that.
They do, but this was an ADA thing.
Oh, because of the ADA thing, okay, all right.
And that's.
And honestly, if it was required, I'd just move that entrance to the front of the building, so it's either way.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, and I I bring it up, I, there's other stuff, like I went through, like. I thought this was a relatively long conversation considering the applications, but there's. I just wanted to hit the things that I thought the board might not. Uh, agree with me or that I wasn't, it wasn't, you know, bulletproof, so to speak.
It's a great project.
You make our lives a lot easier when you.
Well, that's.
Your homework.
That's why I am here, so, not, not necessarily make applicants' lives more difficult, but.
I'm gonna be silent on that.
Yes, I know, I know, I, I don't, it shouldn't. I just do what the ordinance tells me, you know, so.
Got a job to do, I hear you.
Yeah.
It's all good.
That's why I mentioned, project is small, maybe we could make some changes so that it doesn't take this long. Um, all right, I don't have any other questions or issues on this, on the um. Kobe and Gail, so on, does the board?
Does anybody else have any questions for Matt?
No.
No.
Okay, then I will get you an email with any of just like the details and information in here and, um. I, it sounds like the board doesn't, isn't gonna wanna see like a rendering or something, the elevation.
No.
Roof, windows, something like.
I know what they're doing out there and they're very conscientious about making things look good, everything. Great cloud boards and white tracts, that, so.
Really looks the same.
See, matching existing that's there, it's less height than what's there.
Yeah.
All of that complies currently, so I think we just have to go through the motions of.
Good, yeah, that works for me, I just wanna make sure so that we don't end up at the next meeting and someone says, I wanna see the, the roof plan and, you know, that.
I'm sure of it.
Um, all right, well, thank you, that's.
Thank you.
We'll. I will talk and but, I'll get all the notice out and hopefully at the next meeting we can.
Appreciate it, thank you all, have a good night.
Um. All right, so. The. Site plan review ordinance. I. So if you.
I will be at the last two meets, so I'm way behind.
Well, we haven't made much progress on it. One of, so, one of the, one of the prop, one of the issues, and this is why I, it makes more of a different, I guess. The amount of time that I spent on that review. For thousand square feet of office space additions was.
Yeah.
A little bit silly, so I'd like to, you know, one of that, I know the site plan review is, um. We're, we're working on it, I think a lot of the issues that took a lot of time, um. Are probably the the bigger issues that hopefully we can address as the comp plan moves forward and. Hopefully gets approved and, because they're more like design issues and what. What kind of development does the town, is the town concerned about, and what kind of development does the town want, and. I think we could probably streamline a lot of these, a lot of the standards in here. Um, or at least make it clear that it doesn't apply to like a thousand square foot addition. Um, so I. Do, do you wanna have a conversation about the site plan review ordinance right now? I think the conversation that we had, I haven't had a chance basically to go through here and sit down with Isabel and kind of narrow it down, but I. Don't want to, I wanna make sure that, I know Neil had asked for a copy of it, so I, this is where it's at right now.
Had, had, had she made many changes since our last?
The last conversation that I had with Isabel was, I basically, I requested that she. Help um, separate. Things that were moved that aren't necessarily new content and changes that are being proposed, because I I think those are gonna be two kind of. Major, uh, handled kind of differently, if it's, if it's not my, my personal perspective on it is. If it's just being moved and it's not a new standard, then it's kind of like, okay, we don't need to know, we need to document it so that we can. Have the town vote on it and everything, but.
So.
It's not a big deal.
So the yellow over the red, is that, are there, does this copy reflect, like. Two different revisions, you know, the first one being the red and then the second being the, the.
Oh.
Yellow over the red, I'm not.
No, it's, well, yes, this. I don't know how many, how many uh, versions of this you've gone through, because I came in, I think halfway. So I don't think it's, it it is gonna show you that like there was a first round of revisions and a second round of revisions and a third round of revisions. I think it is just the two things that I, the two, um.
Times that you, you went through it.
No, not the times, it's the two issues, which is. New content and then exist, things that are already existing, but just in a new spot.
So, so what are, what is new content? How is that marked in here? Oh, I just, okay, it's just underlined in red.
Is gonna be the new, well, yeah, though, anything that's changed, I think is underlined in red, and I believe the yellow. Is new, but I will confirm this because it doesn't say on here.
Because there's some yellow with red lines through it, you know, and I just didn't.
Oh.
I didn't understand.
So this is, this is just how the tracking changes works in, I assume this is Word. If anytime, like when you go through here, anything that is, well, black obviously is just unchanged, no touch. If it is red and underlined, that means that it's been changed and probably an addition. Anything that just crossed out is, it was deleted, so the stuff that's crossed out. Is showing you that this is what was there and now it's, now it's gone, the stuff that is in, I believe, in yellow. Is, and I'll have to, this is why it's, it's a little bit confusing to kind of get your head around, and this is why I'm trying to get my arms around it, is like. I believe the yellow.
You can see it.
Yeah, I haven't seen this.
Yeah.
Well, you know what, instead of guessing as to what the yellow is, I'm just gonna ask Isabel, it looks like.
We gotta have that confirmed, too, too much goes on.
Yeah.
I like the little notes that she put on that, on the side were helpful.
Yeah.
But I, I just need to.
This yellow was added, there's notations on most of this, right?
But then, then there's some yellow that's, that's crossed out, yeah, so.
Why, I would have assumed the yellow would be new content, but the, the stuff that's crossed off. Seems, if it's highlighted yellow and crossed off, I don't, I'm not sure what that means. So.
I don't think I can really talk much to this.
Yeah.
Today, I mean, I. Today, I mean, I have to like really.
Well, and we need to know what exactly what those are.
Understand what's.
You see multiple different levels of that.
Yeah.
I looked at this, I went, whoa, you know.
Right.
It it a lot has been crossed out, and I don't know if it just vanished or whatever. I need to just really try to understand what exactly is going on.
What I know in the original one, but there are a lot of stuff that she crossed out was duplicate, so she moved it, but crossed it out in the section it was in. But we don't know what that is.
Yeah, yeah, and that that's what I'm trying to understand, because I know there's some stuff that just got moved, which i- is, it probably got crossed off in here, but if it, so this, it shows up somewhere else, so that this is what I gotta.
Are great, you know, she has put in some notes.
Yeah.
So, so you're, were you thinking of having some kind of a meeting in November about this?
You mean a public meeting?
Yeah.
This stuff, a- after our last conversation, my understanding, and you correct me if I'm wrong, was that this stuff is pretty much like, we don't need to have a public meeting. I don't think there needs to be a whole lot of public input, not because you know, the public input, public's input isn't welcome, but because it's these are like a lot of administrative or just clarifying things. It's not like we're adding new standards or changing kind of the.
We're not doing any new policy stuff.
Yeah, right, right. The only thing that that really is a kind of a design thing is the um screening, which is really not new. There were screening standards in here, and from what I understand, Isabel went through and tried to kind of clarify and streamline them.
And significant trees.
And significant trees, yeah.
There were a few things.
Yeah, yeah, and so that, I mean, that wasn't the only, only changes, but I think that, you know, one of the things um is
Well, wait, you have to have a public, I mean, I'm not sure what the timeframe for this is. And we have to have some public hearing or meeting.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Well, so with this stuff and and I'm happy to kind of adjust as the planning board would like. With this stuff, I figured it was the administrative stuff that we can move forward relatively quickly. Assuming that's what the planning board wants to do. My assumption is like, we want to do everything as quickly as possible, uh, at least as efficiently as possible, not to rush it, but just like why put it off? Um, that this is the stuff that we could do without having to do a lot of public outreach that isn't going to require kind of um drawing on the comprehensive plan. Um, you know, that kind of the, the stuff that requires thing more time is addressing character of neighborhoods, where uses are allowed, um, design standards, things like that. So that's the stuff that I want to make sure we do a good amount of public outreach for.
So so what's your plan on this?
This, yeah, I figure we can move forward quickly as soon as so I I figured there wouldn't be much public outreach if we don't really need to do any, I mean, our meetings are public, if anybody wants to chime in, they're welcome to. Um, as soon as the planning board is comfortable with any, the document and the changes that are being proposed, then we would have to have a public hearing, because that's just required for any ordinance changes. So the planning board would have to have a public hearing, and as soon as we've got a final draft, we'll schedule that, have that meeting, the public hearing, then we would send it to the select board. They also, I believe, have to have a public hearing, because it's changed any ordinance. Um, and then they would put it on a warrant for, I assume, a special town meeting where we would vote here, but it could also end up on a regular town meeting, or it could end up at a you know, uh, as a, I guess, referendum at the election, depending on the timing.
Yeah.
So. I don't know, if you have any thoughts, happy to.
I don't have a copy of this, I don't believe.
I, this I included in the um, in the packet that I just sent for this meeting, but I'm I'm happy to print out hard copies if anybody needs.
Well, let me take a look.
Jonathan, you may, if you look back at this stuff, because this hasn't changed since Isabel.
Hadn't changed since. So I probably had the, I I assumed and I assumed that things had changed in the last couple of months. I've been hap- absent two meetings.
So you know what would be really helpful when we get these? If they could put a date, so we we know, like, the version.
Yeah.
That idea, you know what I mean? So if it's the the ten to twenty three.
That's, yeah.
This is the one we've been working off right along, correct.
Right, but like, yeah, when the last, when the last changes, because I'm the last time that you all saw this. We, yeah, was over the summer, and I think since then is when I, I think this is what the highlighting, I assume the highlighting is new, because that's what I had asked was if we could separate out the new content and just the reorganizations, so the, there shouldn't be too much new here. But I'm just trying to figure out.
Okay, well, oh, oh, oh. Well, focus on it.
So my intention is for the next meeting, I wanted to have it for this meeting, but like I said, this, that review was kind of was a lot. So by the next meeting, for the next meeting, I'm hopefully I'll have a good handle on this and we can have a good conversation and if I can hopefully we'll have something that can be like, this is a potential final draft for you all to say, yes, cool, let's schedule final here, a public hearing. Or if more changes are needed, we can do that too.
Okay.
So. But yeah, if there are, if there is anything that you want me to like, make sure is in here or focus on, or that you thought was an issue before, I know, I think it was the last meeting Anne mentioned um neighborhood meetings. So that's in here.
That should be in.
Yeah, I mean, I I I imagine that I'm going to make some changes, because I just want to make sure that this stuff, it works, um, but the next draft should hopefully be you know, have the rubber stamp from Isabel and I, and then.
Okay, forward, I'll go through it some before the next meeting.
Okay.
And I hope that we print this stuff up, you know, for people that we make it bigger.
Bigger, is it?
But, you know, yeah, this is too difficult for regular people to read.
Yeah, I think it's because it's because it's got those notes in the margin.
That's why it shrank.
That's why, yeah.
All right.
So. Not, I mean, we couldn't.
I could, if I take off my glasses, I can get stuff.
I know, I'm happy to, I'll see if I can figure out.
I mean, I I I can work with this. This is fine for me.
The notes are handy.
Yeah, the notes are good.
So you prefer the notes too? I mean, I know ideally it would be bigger text and notes, but.
Yeah, I like notes, okay, lots of notes.
Alrighty. So, all she wrote?
That's.
That all she wrote.
Yes, I mean, I got some letters out from the last meeting, there's nothing major um trying to think if there's any applications that are coming.
One will surprise you.
Not, I mean, there, I have, we are working with uh Leanna Libby on her property, her camp. But we're just trying to like get the information sorted out, and there's an issue with the septic, which is all George's world, so it's at some point, hopefully, that'll be resolved, and then it will have to come here, but.
We we've been out to that.
Say, we looked at that once.
Yeah, and that's, I know there there is a history and it's been so, but yeah. So that was just why I'm like, the plumbing stuff is George, it's not really the the domain of the planning board or so it's George, I'm like, I'm trying to help him as much as I can, but I figure there's no reason to.
He's got a, that's that's his world.
Right.
You're right, it's not our world.
Yeah, so hopefully, once he gets that sorted out, then it'll it'll come back here and we can address, could whatever the planning board need to address. Okay, um. The next meeting is in November, I forget what the date is, but.
Not on election day.
No, I, that's right, we need to move it, it should be the week after election day, the sixth is the first Monday. It's the day before election, so we don't have to. So I think we already did, uh.
Thirteenth, I believe.
I actually, I think you're right, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, so, right, because the, this room's going to be full on the sixth, we moved it to, let me just say. Yes, um, the thirteen, thirteenth, yep.
Monday.
So Monday, the thirteenth is the next planning board meeting.
That's what I do, okay.
Right, I think we already, I tried to address this stuff yeah, months in advance of that, there's no, as soon as you said that, I remember we did, so. Yes, so that's when that, the next one is. We will have to, I think, I assume anyway, you probably want to move, I think it's Janu-, yeah, because January first is a Monday, so unless you want to meet on the first, which is a holiday, probably want to move it. We can address maybe that at the next meeting.
Cool, I want to move it, all right.
All right, so.
Coming in here January first.
That's what I figured, uh, I mean, we, I mean, if you want, we could just, we could address it now, do you want to move the January first meeting to Monday, January eighth?
That's the answer.
Sure.
On favor? That is, I'm sorry. Also, I did, I did it all wrong, because nobody, nobody, uh, nobody moved it and nobody seconded it.
Well, we just kind of made a gentleman's agreement, I think. I'm okay with that.
All right, I had a good comment, but I'll I'll save it. By consensus, there you go. Okay, I'll make sure that gets in the uh, in the minutes, so.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Hold on, check it, hold on, there you go.
Yeah.